All right, like welcome everyone to the July twenty second, twenty five, Bethel Planning and zoning Commission, a regular meeting. Uh, we'll start with the flag and the leadings, please. But your reasons to the plan, United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands for nation, individual, liberty, justice, for all. All right, we'll start with our introductions. So that of the table, Ken Barson, Mr. Jeff DeRosa, Mike Kozlowski, Vice Chair. Paul Shoney, Chairman, here, right, be open it. The Leggart joining us online.
And Dan Carter, first slide, sitting in executive.
Thank you, and staff with us this evening.
Jeremy DeCarly, interim planner.
Dave McCollum, Land use coordinator.
Amanda Martinez, recording secretary.
Excellent, thank you, um, and I will see Jeff DeRosa for Kitty Grant. Absolutely, see there. And the public hearing for Vessel RE Holdings forty eight fifty National Road, uh, has been continued through our next regular meeting, uh, which is August twelfth, uh, seven o'clock in the G P. There will be no testimony, no discussing of anything on this night, um, so, um, that's it. We'll move into our business meeting, uh, we have three actually, Jerry, do we need a motion to continue that?
I would recommend the motion, although you as chairman can do it based on the request of the applicant, but a motion is always a good idea.
Take a motion to continue public hearing, Vessel RE Holdings LLC forty eight fifty National Road.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions, all right, motion passes. Thank you, all right, into our business meeting, sorry about that, uh, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting? They were a few pages long. Uh, does any, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Are none, I'll make motion to accept the meeting, the minutes for meeting of seven, eight twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions? Motion passes, uh, we have an invoice for news times for six hundred and forty eight dollars and eighty cents for public noticing. Need to see the bill, like to see the bill. I'll make a motion to pay news times six hundred and forty eight dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, moving right along, all right. We are moving into our work session, we have two items on the work session this evening, TD and Sons for fifty three pillar avenue and Goldwood Drive LLC on seventy two reservoir. I am personally refused from both applications, so I'll step away and like, see over. I refuse from. What are all of these on that?
You're fine, yeah, you have enough.
Yeah, I can't see anybody. It's all right. Yeah.
Um, already, uh, next slide, there does TD and Sons Inc. fifty three tiller app, eight thirty G site management units. Um, we spoke about this in our last work session, um, gave a consensus vote on some, um, different conditions of approval. I don't know if everyone has a chance to take a look at that, but it had any comments, I wanna mention anything there? I think those conditions are pretty good.
Right, Bob, do you have anything you wanna add there?
No, I'm good.
Yep. Diane?
Um, I just thought for eighteen or somewhere around there, we should say something about having the neighbors having to be notified ahead of time. And there's nothing in there about them doing a pre blasting survey to be done, which we wanted.
We talked about doing that.
Can you read eighteen just for us real quick, Graham?
I just identified that on a sorry place, truck traffic related to materials transfers is to be conducted between the hours of nine AM and three PM Monday through Friday. And I just thought, that's when I thought about the neighbors being notified, um, when they're transferring that and when they're doing the blasting. So I don't know.
I definitely agree with the blasting, and that would be part of their blasting plan, but go ahead, Sproul.
So, we heard last time that part of their blasting procedures, it's five minutes before they did it, they, they blow their. Strong whistle for a part, and then three minutes, and then just before one time, there's, there's an intro, first one is just. One, and then the signhouse two, and the last one is three, so there is a notification process.
And that, that is part of the typical application with the fire marshal to do that. Uh, as far as truck traffic goes, I'd also, I'm not how you would probably word that, just because. You know, it's, it's instruction.
I just thought that wasn't enough time, the five minutes, three minutes intervals.
That is state statute.
Right, oh, can't we ask something more? Because people are working from home, and you've got kids that need to, you know, not be outside and all that kind of thing, I just, I just didn't think that was enough.
I don't know if we can, Jeremy, is that something we can, state statute, I know it goes along with the, uh. The, the, the notification system of blasting, uh, from my experience, that's kind of state law.
Yeah, it's state law, you're, you're absolutely right, and, and I think the other thing is that, you know, the, the neighbors will be notified as part of the pre blast survey in advance of all the blasting activities, um, and, and I think. I think your that's going to be one that goes out as well.
But I didn't see anything in there for that pre blast survey to be done.
Well, that, that's required per state law, so that's why number, number twenty one is all blasting shall be conducted in accordance with all appropriate state and local laws and regulations. And reviewed and approved by the fire marshal prior to commencement of blasting activities, uh, the pre blast survey to neighbors within two hundred and fifty feet is required by state law.
You're right, Jeremy, and, and we did discuss last time, just making, just because the applicant had suggested, you know, David didn't want to cut off two fifty was, and we were wanting to make sure we said three hundred feet from property line. Am I correct though?
Yes.
So that, so we could just make that quick change to that. Um, that they, the all, all, uh, neighbors, three hundred feet within any property line of this project would be part of that pre blast survey. Thank you, all that, Brett.
The other thing we didn't have to do is anything about the roads.
Part of their application was that up to their property line they would, but if we want to add that in, we should provide no problem adding that. Um, but.
The other thing I just thought of is, um, they still don't have, um, water from Aquarians, um, and before they can do, get a building from that, I think they should have. Have that worked out and, and the, uh, similar.
Diane, I asked Todd Ritchie. Aquarian supplies, Chewing Heights area. In town of Bethel, that's the.
He's something.
Town.
I think it's, it was the one where I came in late and I went down.
Different service, a different service.
Comes from the town of Bethel, it comes from the Chestnut branch.
Yeah.
But it hasn't been worked out still, so, I mean, before they. Do anything else, I think they would be able to get that, where they said they were gonna.
That would normally be part of, just in my, kind of my experience, is part of the building department application, not really playing, so. But I understand where it comes from, and I understand where it comes from with the. Tempers where more are concerned, but, yeah.
That's what you did say that about this project.
Right, and then, and then Jeff, yeah, exactly, that's why Jeff checked in with, with Todd Ritchie, and it's just a different service.
You're sure that's not the one from the top or the bottom, because they have two different lines?
I looked at map, there's a lot of difference in that, from town flip side, and it's clearly telecoded and everything, and, you know, it's screen or that this way is blue. So, so. Because I was concerned, and it's a thing, if you couldn't get water, I could be part of the project.
This is showing that it's, it's, it's well covered for both.
For, for the, the tops, top and bottom line, yeah.
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 The Aquarian is really when they just don't. Because I just don't feel like.
Yeah, it's new town, it's gonna be. Well, there was, there, I think there's an issue with, there's like two lines that they couldn't connect, or whatever, different pressures, but they were still.
But he was talking about, there was more to it.
So that's, um, just to be, it's more towards with Aquarian water only, what happened is during August eighteenth, storing two wells running over the town, and they not, they have to put it back online, and that's what's causing the issue with Aquarian water, they're not, uh, connecting our system.
Yeah.
But I think Steve, he said, I don't know why.
I, I, I don't, I can't speak to why Steve said that. Right, that's, I don't think it applies, I. I mean, I'll say.
Scroll.
To, what's, what's worse question, which is, when somebody says they'll repair the road, there is no definition. I used to earn my living, litigating this, um, they come along, they put some cold patch, and I repaired it, it says repair to the document, I've met my obligations, in the meantime, the road's got. Swells, cavities and everything else, shouldn't we have something a little more specific to what repair means?
Yes. Bring it back to its original condition. No, I would, I would just say, I would say mill and repave the road. To, up into the property line.
Yep. By the way, this is how it's done in other towns.
I, no, a hundred percent agree, they had to do, you know, look for a more hard progress, so I, exactly.
Right, and the, the last one is, my last comment pertains to item twenty, all right, which is a watered down version of what I wrote. Um, because we're dealing with over seven hundred trucks, we're dealing with idling. There is diesel fuels coming out, and yet, with the team time for seventy two reservoir. Which the police department was present during the meeting. They have said, they suggested that for reservoir, there'd be, they'd be present to help with traffic going back and forth, and I think that we are within our rights. Given the extent of this excavation, and that we want to avoid idling trucks, to request that they have the presence of a police representative there. Not to have a conversation, but to make it a condition. The hearing says, the applicant shall contact, yeah, I contacted, I called him, and.
Okay.
They, they don't have the sensitivity that we did as a commission of. Luminous meetings where the neighbors expressing their concerns and air quality and whatnots, I would like to see something a little more restrictive.
Do you wanna, do you have any verbiage you wanna add to this, or change number twenty?
It's a requirement that they have police presence for traffic control.
During. It's not just class. During the, the, the export of all materials?
Materials, yeah.
So, we wanna write it as something like the applicant shall, um, is required to use the Bethel Police Department. Uh.
Traffic.
For traffic control when, when performing any exporting activities? Or truck.
Paul? Uh, Paul's out, Bob, it's me, Mike, doing this one.
Mike, I, I, I think if, if you, if you use what Sproul was saying. It, it will, it will help control. The, the timeline of when they do use trucks in and out of there.
Uh, I agree. Uh, to, 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 to. Uh, during. So, the applicant was required to use traffic control provided by the Bethel Police Department, um, and, and during trucking activities, is that what we wanna say? Is that simple, or want to control? To control. Traffic around the site. Oh, reduce side link. Traffic. Around. Site. During. Trucking. Operations. To reduce side link time, we want to have that to. Reduce slash eliminate. Yeah, all right, so the applicant shall contact, the applicant is required to use traffic control provided by the Bethel Police Department. You control traffic around sites during trucking operations to reduce slash eliminate idling time of trucks. Sure. I think it just happened to Bethel PD, your presence is increasing.
So we'll be adding something that's three hundred feet somewhere?
Yes. So, we'll do twenty two, that, um, where was actually the pre blast?
There wasn't anything.
There's not, okay, I know, but there was something that was in regards to.
Oh, really? No.
Number four, number twenty one is the condition about require, uh, uh, all of the state and local regulations regarding.
All blasting shall be conducted in accordance with appropriate state and local laws, regulations, approved on farm marshal prior, in addition to, we write number twenty two, in addition. Tied, tied to twenty one noted above. The pre.
Splicing survey.
The pre blast survey shall, last survey. Shall include. All properties. Within. Three hundred feet of. Property line. Of applicant. You good with that?
Could we give anything about the notes?
Yeah, the last one, so that would be twenty two, and twenty three. Um, well, is there anywhere else that we talk about roads, just making sure so this is. From the sewer water main, road reconstruction shall be protected by each, this one's. Jeremy, this, the part that we want to make sure it's clear about the road, um, replacing, makes sense to add it to sixteen, or should we make that a separate line item in twenty three?
Uh, yeah, you, you could, you could probably add it to sixteen, um. What do we have in there right now, all work within the public right of way, including but not limited to water and sewer main installation and road reconstruction shall be protected by the issuance of a performance bond in the form of a letter of credit or cash and an amount to be approved by town staff prior to the issuance of zoning permit, I, I mean, I, you're. So, so you're sort of doubly covered, and I don't have a problem with you adding another condition or changing the language, but as part of the application, the applicant agreed to repave that road in that section that's gonna be torn up from, uh, from edge to edge. Um, and, you know, Public Works would be the one to, uh, to approve the bond amount to do that reconstruction, and they'll make sure that they have enough to cover the cost of re, road reconstruction. So it's a belt and suspenders approach, if you want to add additional, you know, an additional, uh, condition there, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it'll just make us all feel a little better about it.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, and it did, after sixteen, after the semicolon, we'll write something to the effect of, um. The reconstruction of the road. Of road. Shall be, shall, shall consist. Of milling. And repaving. To DOT standards.
That's a, that's a town road, correct, so you probably want to say the town standards.
To town, sorry, you're right, to town standards from shoulder to shoulder, to the property line.
Within a reasonable time.
Yes.
With reasonable figures.
Yeah, prior to C O. Yeah, all right, so let me just, after sixteen, after the semicolon, reconstruction of road shall consist of milling and repair to town standards for shoulder to shoulder. For shoulder, shoulder of the road to property line prior to a C O, if issuance of a C O. Okay. Um, so we're not gonna do twenty three, is there anything else, Sproul, Diane, I'm here, thank you.
We did the wall, just something that I.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not remembering. A utility pole?
Who do they, does that, does that have to be part of our?
No, no, that would be part of their site plan, they, they showed on the site plan, that, you know, they say that has to be built. Um, one more time around, is that, Bob, do you have anything else you wanna add?
I'm good.
Okay. Good. Yeah, good. All right, I'm good. I don't wanna make motions. Wanna make motions? All right, I'll make one. Um, I'll make a motion to approve fifty three tiller app, eight thirty G housing development, um. With the, uh, conditions of approval, one through. Twenty two, including our modifications to it from sixteen, including the words reconstruction to road shall consist of milling. And repairing the road to standards of the town from shoulder to shoulder to property line prior to issuing, issuance of a C O. Uh, we will also amend number twenty to say the applicant is provided to use traffic control provided by the Bethel PD. To control traffic around site during trucking operations to reduce slash eliminate idling time of trucks. And we are going to add number twenty two, in addition, tied to condition twenty one noted above, the pre blast survey shall include all properties within three hundred feet of property line of applicants.
Second emotion.
All right, we do a little call, uh, Mr. Leggart?
I'm in favor.
Eddie? No. Diane? So. Uh, yes. It also has.
Because three of those, two yeses.
Okay.
There were three, yeses, um, three, yeah, yeah, three yeses, two no's, three.
Three, three, okay.
Three.
What do you do? Three. Vote, okay.
No, Diane, you said, I said no, yeah, you said no, you said no, Ken said no. Uh, oh, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. Uh, Jeremy?
Well, uh, I mean, at this point, I think you can have a discussion if there are additional conditions that get folks to a yes, and then, i- if that's the case, you can have a motion to rescind. Uh, and, and then do a second motion, or you can let it fail, I, I would caution you on, uh, you know, failing an approval here, as this is an eight thirty G application, and you know what the implications of that are. So I think, you know, it might be worth having additional conversation to see if there are any conditions that should be added that can, that can get the, the body to a yes.
Yeah, listen, I. I wanna say no to this too, but we have no, we have no testimony here that proves. Where we had the discussion of health and safety, we went through a bunch of conditions here, and it just, be like, okay, I'm, let me hear it, Jeff.
Just, you know, I, right, I've kind of been hanging my hat on this the whole time, about the danger that occur, and that the increased population on that road, that's what that's gonna do for traffic and pedestrians. And in the police department's letter from, uh, December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, um, you know, it, it surmises that, you know, the, the bottom minus is this would significantly increase the risk of accidents and undermine publics. If you have fifty plus people walking to town, this, this property is within walking distance to a lot of us, and we're going around that line, or the applicant made no, um. Effort to increase, you know, the, the safety of that, said they would chip away a lot, they said they would chip away the edge of the lock, the increase of the lock, and stuff, like, you know, that curve is nasty, there's been accidents. And, you know, I think recently there was an accident, we were fortunate that nobody was playing in the front yard, you know, so, you know, I really feel, based on the, uh, police commissioner's response initially back in December, that there's a serious, uh, public, so my vote.
Danny?
Kind of hanging my hat on the same thing, uh. Total number of units, to me, it's a seat safety factor, there was a lot of students, I, I could look. So, safe, so, get a safety.
Correct, I, I hear you, and I, and I definitely understand where you guys are coming from there, Mr. Leggart, do you have anything to add to that, or, or rebuttal that?
What, what is the, the, the vote on the motion to approve with what?
Three to three.
It was three to three, Mr. Leggart, and, and, and then Jeff brought up his concerns with safety, which I, I acknowledge, and I, and I agree with that, that corner being unsafe, and with the fire, with the police department's. Uh, recommendation that the increased amount of, uh, vehicle traffic with pedestrians on the road is gonna make it an unsafe environment, um. I know we added a stipulation in here to add sidewalks, but that's only in front of their property line, so it doesn't really alleviate the whole problem.
Well, I, I just think we, we, we voted last time around four to three, to a, uh, consensus of approval. And, uh, with the understanding that we could add in. A, a, additional restrictions, which we did. That would handle anything that wasn't, wasn't already discussed the night before. And now we're trying to turn around, we're gonna disapprove the thing, that doesn't seem. You know, like, that's the right way to go, and I don't think any concerns are enough that are gonna hold up in court. They're gonna tell you that. You know, the, the, this thing should be denied.
Can I, sir? Please.
I, it's not the greatest spot in the world, but it's, it's, they certainly have, have, I think, made. Certain. Conditions that are gonna improve that property.
Mr. Jeremy, I wanted to direct a question to the town planner, interim, uh, Jeremy, from your, from your, uh, background, what you understand of eight thirty G, you know, and not approving something to the safety. Does this sound like something that's consistent, that, you know, other places have used?
You know, I, I, I'm gonna, I, I wanna be cautious in how I answer that question, because ultimately it's up to the, up to a judge, but, you know, if, if there is something that the police commission, that, you know, if, if the idea here is to lean on something that the police commission has issued a statement, yeah, as part of the record. Then perhaps, um, but if it's, you know, if it's, you know, and if, if there's personal experience with commission members, I'll say perhaps. Um, but, you know, the applicant did agree to, to chip away the ledge and try to increase or improve the sightline on that corner, um, it is a pre-existing road, um, you know, the curve is there, it's been there. You know, for as long as Bethel's been there, um, and so, you know, I think that, again, I, I would say if there's something on the record. Submitted, then.
Can you read that again, Jeff, what, what you wrote before?
It's talking about how it's gonna increase, uh, the amount of household members, about two, two vehicles per household, uh, increases the risk of car accidents, if the ninety degree northwest turn, it's not fully clear. Line of sight could block, they're clear, it's really making it difficult for drivers and pedestrians to see how come to traffic or other hazards, this would significantly increase the risk of accidents and undermine publics.
Wish I brought that up, I wish, I wish we said that last year, because I think, yeah, did we say that exact quote, though?
I definitely.
I don't know if you read the whole thing, and I apologize, no, yeah, I got you, I understand, well, that letter's part of the record, so, I gotta be honest, I'm definitely.
It's really the pedestrian part, where you can't walk.
I agree, I agree.
Cars, you know, they chip away the rock. Yeah, okay. So that the cars can maybe see a little bit better. But the way the pedestrians go along.
Yeah, and and Bob, I understand where you're coming from too, but to Kenny's point, you know, there is a lot of units going up on this small little road. You know, if if they wanted to come back with something that was modified with a reduced unit count, they understand that.
Or sidewalk to town. I know we can't force them. That's why we can't put that into resolution. But if they wanted to build sidewalk to town, you know, I don't know.
Let's see if they'll come back. Diane? You you voted no. You obviously stand with that.
Yeah, I was concerned about that. And about the blasting so close to that the car just rocked and probably building down below. Just it's really.
Scroll. Any other comments there?
No. I still vote yes. We had the right conditions here. Which are not on the draft. We have a number of other projects that this specific commission has. And somebody's mind could create a safety concern. And where do people walk today? If this project doesn't go forward, there is no sidewalk anywhere. So whatever.
You're doubling the population of people on that street.
I I understand that. Just saying we're not doing anything to mitigate the risk that's there today. And I understand your point, Jeff. I'm not disagreeing with it. Yeah, we're at, we're adding twenty units. Potentially forty people, not not all of which are going to be walking to town.
Yeah, but you don't think they're going to say hey, this is a walkover area when they're marketing it to tie to tenants?
Well, that's.
I I I know that we can't do what ifs. This is, we have to stay within the facts, but um, yeah.
So. Mr. Chairman, if I may, one thing you might want to consider. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make two comments. I would be cautious about using the the foot traffic as part of um, a reason for denial because you've had no um, I mean, I know that the police commission's brought up a concern about foot traffic, but you've had no expert witness suggest that this is going to increase foot traffic on that road. Um, I suspect there's not a lot of foot traffic on that road now because of the configuration of it. It's probably not a safe place to walk. It doesn't have a sidewalk. Um, so, you know, I I can't while I I I understand the concern and you might end up with some foot traffic, I think most reasonable people are going to look at it and say, I'm not driving, I'm not walking down that street to town. It's too dangerous. So that's that's comment number one. Comment number two is if the commission is going to deny, then I would probably suggest that you do a denial without prejudice, which allows them to come back at a lower unit count. Um, and gives gives the applicant a little bit more flexibility as opposed to just going straight to court. Um, which which is right otherwise.
So how do you state that? Because I I've got to be honest, Jeremy. I mean, just talking it out. I'm 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 leaning towards the the no with the safety issue here. So we just make a motion for a uh, a denial without prejudice? Is that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Mike, Mike, Michael?
Yeah.
Denied over the possibility of future foot traffic. I think you're drawn also because the road is hard. The road is not for foot traffic. And that is, it's a road now. And and no matter what you put in there, you're going to have more foot foot traffic in front of it. But if you want to walk somewhere, half the road is in town, you can't walk and and feel safe. People do it all the time.
Mr. Ignard, if you had kids, though, on your road and you wanted them to go play at their friend's house up the street, you'd want that road to be the safest road possible, would you not?
Michael, I'm going to give you a little history lesson here. You know how Bob Legard got involved in in planning zoning? We lived on a dead end street. The dead end street was to be opened up into chimney heights. And we fought it. And we were told by the planning zoning commission, and we were told by judges that we didn't have the right to have our kids play in the street. Walk in the street or do anything in the street. The right was the right away was to the cars. That that's that's what's what's in this case also. It it what do we, if you have kids walking up the street?
Yeah, I hear you.
Unless they're standing in a crosswalk. They're not considered safe.
Mr. Ignard, though, with all due respect, that's a single family residence neighborhood and and we're putting twenty units into high it's a high density project. It's a little bit different circumstances here, no?
Yeah, but when they hooked up our our street to chimney heights, how many houses do you think it hooked up to?
I I understand, but the density remained the same. It was what? One, one house per half acre?
And I guess the existing conditions on your road weren't the same as existing conditions that were dealt.
What's the idea with bridges?
Yes. Someone want to make a motion, one way or the other.
Wait, what what poll ask for here? By right, how many units are they entitled to put in that lot?
I asked Beth that in the very, very beginning. It was a small number. It was like, she said they would have to subdivide and maybe get three houses. Right.
Eight thirty G's, thirty graper. Is that correct?
Right, but if there was just a zoning regulation, if you were to do a subdivision of a couple acres others there.
Three or four.
Yeah, I I don't know the exact number, but that's.
My point being that just going to be an increase. Assuming that risk pedestrians go down that road. And Jeremy, you made the point that maybe we try to get a lower number of units. They're going to come back and say we were in twenty, I believe it was twenty-six. Now they're at twenty. They've already accommodated that. I don't think we have the legal foundation for this objection. Go through it and spend the town's money. I think you're really serious about this. You should be talking like Terry said to somebody who's an expert in the field and personally hear from the police department.
But unfortunately, at this time, we need to make a decision. This is just the timeline that's come up. We've put ourselves in this corner.
We think ourselves.
If it stays a tie vote, what happens?
It's a denial. But if we do redo a motion without prejudice to Jeremy's point, we have the opportunity for the applicant to come back with a revised site plan.
We have to hear guidance.
I don't know.
Jeremy, we have to.
I think they would hear what that tonight has guidance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think I I generally agree with Sproul. I think, you know, I I I I suspect that with a denial, this will probably be appealed and and I don't know that the record contains enough to uphold the the appeal. I mean, that that's that's my opinion based on what I know. Um, I also know that the timeline on this project dragged on for a very, very long time. And, uh, you know, if there was additional information that was needed, there was more than ample time to receive that. And I think a court is going to look at all of that.
So what would we have needed?
Look at it as a stall in tactic.
So Jeremy, we would have needed an expert, meaning an actual police officer to come to our meeting and tell us that it was dangerous. Is that right?
I mean, I think if you if you're looking at pedestrian traffic, you need, you would need uh, some sort of, and I don't even, honestly, I don't even know who it would be, but somebody that could sit there and honestly tell you that there's, you know, you can expect twenty-five pedestrians on that road as a result of this application. Um, you know, I I think I ju- I just think that that's a a a difficult path for for you to travel and have a have an appeal upheld.
I don't think it was just pedestrian, I'm concerned.
Yeah. Yeah, but so Jeremy's point, that corner is an existing condition that has nothing to do with this application. That was a single family house or two 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 houses. You can't use that with the increased amount of people that walk because of this project.
I have a procedural question here. Let's just suppose that we issue a denial with prejudice.
Without prejudice.
And it goes to court and the court says, no, Bethel planning a zone drives ourselves tonight. What happens to all of these conditions that we've written? Do they then go away?
That that would need to be worked out between the town attorney and the and the uh, applicant's attorney and the judge.
We we're really in a very weak negotiating position at that point. Because we've just been slapped by the courts.
Hit code. Point of eight thirty G, right? Is to provide affordable housing.
Correct.
The point is to underserved communities, right? And if you have any safety or health concerns, I might be just generalizing this and maybe I'm wrong if someone could pull it up. But the point of eight thirty G is to provide affordable housing for underserved communities. We know from our last meeting that we are very close to applying for a moratorium. We are, we are not all because of Reading, who has point something percent of affordable housing. We are there. I I just see I I think that safety uh, the safety concerns outweigh the application in this in this instance.
We should make an offer of uh, about four less units.
Well, I mean, we can't make an offer now. We have to either just vote without prejudice or or vote to approve, so.
Yeah, we've been saying yes to every eight thirty G that's come across the table and every person who comes from the public is being less. Okay. The right, not everyone. No, we did, we said yes to.
You denied the first one. We denied it. That's the first time.
Yeah, and then they worked it out and eventually landed the subject and was right and stated, come and fix it.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment to this point too, because I kind of eight thirty G is a difficult topic to solve. But the bottom line is we do not have a law we can do in eight thirty G. It's very spelled out and health and safety has to really be proven. Or some other huge mitigating factor that affects the community. I would be very weary about wanting to deny something because of the pressure from the public. Because again, it just gets us jammed up and we we're going to spend our town budget trying to defend ourselves. I don't think that's worth just going out and just saying we're going to deny eight thirty G because of the density issues. Be really sure where you're getting on the safety, not the density, not negotiating how many less units. Like, if it's a blind curve and that's what you're hanging your hat on, then then fine. Um, I do believe we will lose. I believe with my heart, everything I hear about eight thirty G, we will lose this argument every day. See your guys' call though. We're going to fight for that. It's actually not mine. It's your call. And, you know, the town will support the planning zoning issues. Stand every day.
Anyway, yeah.
If we're going to lose those conditions, if we vote no with without prejudice, that would be way worse than approving with the conditions.
I I know where you're coming from, just.
What if the applicant doesn't like one of those conditions? Then how do they deal with that?
May may I? Can I, can I jump in to answer some questions?
Yes.
Oh, okay. If 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 the applicant chooses to appeal um, your decision, e- even if it's an approval, right? You you're you're going on the evidence that that's in the record, you know, what, why, why would they, what evidence would they have to argue? The reasonable conditions that you've come up with. And and that's and that's the key word in there, right, is reasonable. You know, you're you're discussing trying to uh, figure out how to keep the road safe for for construction vehicles with the uh, with a traffic cop. If 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 I'm if I'm understanding that correctly, you know, on onsite while you're having construction activities, that that's a reasonable con- condition, right? I I, you know, what what evidence would would uh, the applicant have to argue that that condition's unreasonable? That that's that's the key word there that you have to be mindful of when when you're thinking of what you want to incorporate into a resolution and what you do not.
Right, David, but let's say they found um us saying they they haven't had sidewalks in their entire site plan application. We added that they have to have sidewalks in the front of their property line. And they say, no, we don't like that. What what happens?
Well, that that's that's, I mean, if they choose to appeal their uh, your decision, then it's it's no different than a denial, right? They would, you would go with, you would have a case that's brought before a judge and it would be litigated the same way a denial would be.
They could object to just that singular condition and a judge could reverse that singular condition as part of part of as part of one of those. It's a little bit different when there's an approval with conditions than it is if you deny it. Keep in mind too, that the applicant did submit a traffic study um, that, you know, indicates essentially no impacts here. Um, and that is part of the record and would be reviewed. Um, I know that there's a a subsequent letter that came a couple of months later from from LTA, but um, you know, the applicant did submit that uh, traffic study upon your request.
What do we take? What's the motion?
Uh, prove this conditions. Go again. Point of words, Chairman.
Yeah.
If you should decide to go down that route, I think the proper motion is a motion to reconsider. Maybe it's made by someone who voted for it. So if somebody who voted the affirmative could do a motion to reconsider at this meeting, it would put the motion originally back on the table. I get that right there, Chairman?
Yes, Dan, you're you're absolutely right.
So.
It could be, it it has to be somebody who voted for the proposal. Or I guess. I don't want to jump the guy, but I wanted to make that motion. If we're done having discussion.
Yeah, I I I I'm I'm done with the discussion. I'm torn, to be honest with you. I I I understand the legal ramifications. We'll probably lose and we're going to spend a lot of money. Safety is very concerning. Yeah, if you want to make a motion.
I make a motion to reaffirm, it's a town motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider the original motion with all of the amendments to the conditions.
So I hope right now it's just a motion to reconsider. Yep, somebody has second. Yeah, with all the conditions. I'll second that.
I think you would need to vote on it.
Yep, Mr. Ignard?
What's the motion now?
To uh, condition of approval, uh, approval with all the conditions, it's a re reconsider vote.
So basically you're going to revote on this again. So you're going to reconsider, meaning you're going to put it back on the table.
So this is a, this is a vote.
Okay, I I still vote in favor.
This is just to put it back on.
Yeah, they did another motion. I know.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
I know.
Yes.
So it's back on the table. So I make the motion.
Yeah, make a motion to approve fifty-three Taylor Ave eight thirty G housing development uh, with our conditions of approval with the amended conditions that I stated earlier.
Seven.
All in favor, Mr. Ignard?
I.
Diane.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Now.
Yes.
Okay.
Final vote.
Pass.
It passed, Bob.
Okay.
We take a, can I make a motion to take a five minute break?
Yeah. Um.
Second. All in favor? Hi. Any votes?
Okay, the recording has started.
Uh, make a motion to come back into public hearing. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm going to see Eric Brundig uh, for the next application, uh, see him for Paul Shaly for one null. I'm going to see Eric Brundig uh, for the next application, uh, see him for Paul Shaly for One Nullwood Drive LLC, Seventeen Reservoir. Um, we closed the public hearing last time on this. There's six units, two, three, two family dwellings um, on the corner of Nullwood and Reservoir. All of them look for our purpose goes.
I have. Yes.
Okay, you have any comments?
I need to make sure where.
Okay.
So um, the building so close to the road is an issue. It's a place to stay, one, three, four, thirteen and a half feet off the road. And then uh, we asked the applicant to provide a site distance plan. He provided one. On the site plan, he shows a measurement ten feet uh, looking uh, from Nullwood looking west, stating that the building is not uh, in the way of the site, by making the site worse. So.
We all know there's existing site conditions from Nullwood going looking down reservoirs.
Yeah, it's actually.
But the building is.
It's actually, according to his plan, and I think it's in compliance, it's right at two fifty. Um, and that's at a measurement of ten feet off the edge of reservoir back onto Nullwood looking left.
Um, and you questioned him on that.
I questioned that. And when we were on the site, on the sidewalk, I questioned it because we eventually got that flag for the corner hung in the right place and I stood back. I didn't measure ten feet or whatever, whatever many feet. I just pretended I was in a car and and then I measured the wheel and I got two twenty. So now I I studied the the site plan, site distance plan, and the ten feet back was, I was questioning whether it's ten feet back. I brought it up in the last meeting. Mr. Trinkus, about thirty minutes into the meeting, said that it was, definitely doesn't have a code for site distances, so he does it in performance with the C, like the D O T. Went to the C, the Connecticut D O T manual. Chapter eleven of the D O T manual states fifteen feet back from the edge of the road. Um, so I called, I called Jeremy and I talked to Todd Ritchie. Todd Ritchie did confirm that fifteen feet is the state requirement. Uh, they do, he did state that they would give leniency, le- leniency on some of those uh, depending on the circumstance. So he has had, where Mr. Trinkus said he used ten feet, he might have had a situation where he used ten feet on a prior job because they allow it. Now, in this case, you know, he didn't go get permission from the state to use ten feet for the measurement. So the state code is fifteen feet. The second you push that site distance back to fifteen feet, where it's supposed to be measured from, now the building's in the lane. Uh, I don't know precisely how much these people back. I don't know what site distance will be, but it's definitely going to be less than fifty, which is maybe worse than the existing condition. So we've always been trying to get them to just push the building back, you know, maybe five units instead of six units. Now you have room for the snow. We have a snow removal issue. We're back further from the road. Uh, we're not doing anything with the site distances, you know, it's, you know, it's just a better plan to have one, one less unit, or or you should take everything, push it back and create more space.
Yeah, I I echo that. I said that at the end of of kind of our closing comments of this commission before we closed out the hearing that as much as most of these eight thirty Gs are too dense, this one is extremely dense. There's no other room on sites but snow safely. Where it can melt, deal with it, you know, the applicant stated of the the owner has a land, you know, all the trucks, well, they're not always going to have a backhoe there or a bomb yet or whatever to handle the snow. I think that's I don't think that's a good argument. I think that's unsafe. I've always said, I think thirteen feet is way too close to the side of the road. You know, they're by right allowed to have four units, uh, two on each because they're combining two lots. Uh, they could do two, two families, just like kind of did across the street there. Um, I I think it's too dense with six.
What's the, the setback requirement from the road, side yard setbacks? From the property, it's not from the road uh, in that area. So it's probably, I don't want to guess, you know, it's taking ten feet or something.
But that that being said, eight thirty G doesn't, doesn't matter with eight thirty.
No, but there still could be, you know, like you don't have front yard setbacks just.
I I know, but they, underlining zoning, if I'm correct, Jeremy, underlining zoning kind of gets thrown out the window with eight thirty G?
It it does. Those standard requirements are are uh, they're moved under an eight thirty G application. Si- sit, no, safety considerations, of course, you know, play into this. So, you know, if if there's a, if there's a valid concern there. Um, you know, again, all of my comments on the last application apply here as well. Um, and I know that, you know, Jeff and I had a couple of emails back and forth on on the site distance requirements and I scoured through the town requirements, zoning subdivision, the ordinance, there's no, there's like, there's requires, um, you know, D O T does have theirs. Those typically apply to D O T owned roads. Um, so, you know, just keep that in mind, but um.
If we don't have a regulation, then, and this is eight thirty G, which is state, basically state application, right? Wouldn't you go by the state standard?
You you can make that argument, and I think that's why Steve did it because he defaults to the, well, he say, he he said that he defaults to the state standard when there isn't one in place at the local level. So um, yeah, I think I think looking at D O T standards is fine. Um, as as I think I said to you, fifteen feet back from the traveled lane seems a little bit excessive considering where, and I know you said there isn't currently a stop bar out there, but considering where the stop bar would be, that to me seems the logical place to to take the stop uh, or the sightline distance. Um, i- if that's fifteen back from the, from the traveled lane, then that makes sense. I kind of doubt that it is, though.
We're also basing that on twenty-five miles an hour. I I don't care what, you know, it, I just, it's just, this is ridiculous. Don't want to go to twenty-five down that road. I I know that's the state law, but that's just a si- safety issue enough. There's a building blocking the view. And at forty miles an hour, it got, you know, that sightline is way down there and someone coming around the corner will not see a kid walking out of the road. I, that's enough for me. Yeah, I think, I think um, experientially, putting my heels on that stake on the sidewalk and and feeling how close you are to the road and knowing that there could be families that within that space have kids that are that are there, yeah.
What kind of product are you giving your, the people buying that place when you're sitting in your living room or your bedroom, laying in your bed and you're fourteen feet off of.
That's not, that's not a. I got, I got.
That's just the point.
Steve asked if I wanted, wanted one of those vests so that people could see me because and we were walking on the property, you know, I'm like, no, do we need?
And Jeff, I feel like to your point, this is not a discussion about quality of life, although I think that's valid. I, to me, it feels about safety. Yeah. And anything else?
Well, I have one more thing. If whatever you guys do at some point, you should really make the applicant do a uh, just even like a title search on the property. We spoke about this.
Yeah, saw that as a reference. Understood.
And I, and I, I didn't agree with safety concerns about where the buildings are.
And the snow.
There's nowhere to put the snow. There's absolutely zero, and where it's going to go is going to pile up on the streets. Well, uh, you already went there. Anything, anything else?
Is there any way we can make a condition of approval to push the buildings back?
I don't think there's room.
Oh, they can.
I think that's too dense.
You kind of have to get rid of it when it goes five units.
I don't know. Listen, by right, they could do four. You know, if if we did a, if draft resolution of denial without prejudice and they came back with a five situation, it's just like we're talking about the last application.
You still have a line of sight.
We got a line of sight. The applicant's engineer stated he uses D O T standards. It's not, you know, like, like I said, he could probably get a variance, but he didn't, you know, and and that, you know, he can come back and reapply with a variance and then maybe we're in the same boat.
So the yellow areas are driveways where the snow can get. The little green area here in between is the area. He has proposed that he would shovel all this and put it back here. Come on, guys.
No, I, listen, you don't have to tell me. I think it's ridiculous.
It's ridiculous. And then just for the record, for the record here, when you and I were out there, the flare was at sixteen feet.
The one he said?
The one that he said.
Twenty, twenty-four.
It was way beyond the norm. And he said he didn't have anything to stake it, which we correct him immediately. And then the last comment to Jeremy's, Tyler's report. We have an attorney who's telling us we got a problem with the.
Title.
Title. This, this doesn't work, guys. And I don't care what Trinkus tries to tell me how to shovel snow.
Mr. Mr. Ignard, comments?
My, I think I have met, you know, what, what he repeated, he qualified for eight thirty G.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Ignard? You're breaking off.
I think that's what they, they need to qualify for the eight thirty G. Whether it be the the sightline or where they're going to put the snow or even the blasting plant. So I think they've, they've met everything that eight thirty G, we could possibly.
I I disagree. I think their development is well within the sightline and there's already a gray area of whether it's right or not, and it's good enough for me to be not safe. Like, I don't think that's a safe corner. It's already not a safe corner. We're making it worse. Right. Good. Any other discussion here?
Well, so would this one go up as a motion and then for?
Well, we have to, we have to take consensus um, tonight on draft approval or denial. So we would be, do one or the other. And we can either do a a draft of approval with suggesting that we reduce the units or we go straight to a denial without prejudice. And similar to other applications in the past, they would come back with a revised site plan. And address some of the issues we have as far as snow removal, which creates freezing, ice, all that stuff, and sightline issues, um, have the correct distances of what we need. Um.
Legal issues with the.
And the legal issues with the property. That's still not taken care of, so.
I would make, I would make a, I make a motion.
Well, I apologize. You keep cutting out there.
I would make a motion. Conditions.
That's, does anyone want a second? I'll second. All right, we'll go one by one. Bob?
Approval.
Cool. Kenny?
Um, which conditions? All those we've been talking about?
Well, we can just go through. We can, we can, we can work on that.
Okay.
This is a consensus.
What, what conditions?
Yes. No, no, no.
No. Since you seconded.
I can't say no.
I don't know.
Well, seconding is just saying we want to vote, yeah.
You can vote no on his own motion.
That's, that's correct.
You can vote no on your own motion.
Okay.
It might be done. One, two, three, four, spruil, no, five, two. No, no.
Who said, who's the second guest?
It was uh, Kenny and and uh, on on conditions of of approval.
Yeah.
Um, so does that put us at where our consensus is a denial without prejudice here?
Well, this is a motion, not consensus.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. But that's what we want to talk about.
Yeah, so if you want, so instead of a motion, you could just say you want to do a consensus. And then if the majority says yes to the consensus of no, then that's what it is.
Then you kind of do that in reverse.
Well, you made, you made a motion. So right now, if you just want to do, okay, let's just go around the table for consensus. So about um, denial, denial, they can go one by one again. And if the majority says yes to denial, then that's it.
All right, I'm going to make a motion.
What, no motion?
I'm sorry. I'm going to take a consensus vote on, I'm sorry. On a denial, uh, a, a, a consensus on a denial without prejudice. I don't know, was it with or without prejudice?
Without.
Without, yeah. Mr. Ignard?
I do vote.
We're doing, the voting failed, Bob.
This is a consensus.
For a denial.
Con- consensus to draft a letter of denial.
And that would be it. So if, yes, we want a letter of denial. Yeah. If we vote no, we don't send a letter of denial.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
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 Because it's majority, so yes.
Do we give them any?
Yeah.
Anything to go by to come back?
Well, um.
We could talk about that.
Jeremy's gonna.
As we put together that, like, we did in the past.
Yeah.
We we, you know, state the reasons why, and that's their, their um, what they would go by to then resubmit a site application. Um, or sort of work.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a motion to deny put together for you uh, based on those reasons for your consideration at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um. August twelfth or do you want, or, or is the meeting after that?
I think it has to be August twelve based on timeline. I don't know that we can make it to September ninth. I'll, I'll look at that.
Yeah, according to your staff report, we do have all the way to the ninth.
You do? Okay, good.
So let's do that. We'll, we'll do it on the ninth.
Okay. You're good.
Okay. Driver's seat's back to you, Paul. Nice to water all over sheath though.
To dently, I'm.
We'll say sitting in the audience speakers, you're great. Thank you, everybody.
Well. I'm too old.
I can hear most of you.
Okay, we'll move on to seven C. Reapplication discussion for possible tax amendment to Route Six Zone to allow residential density bonus exchange for a higher percentage of reporting units and to allow self-storage in certain circumstances. Jeremy, you have something for us on this?
I do. Wayne Zuckerman, uh, I think he was planning to be in the room and I don't know if he's there or not. He is. Okay, so I'll I'll let Wayne take it away and kind of give you the basis of where we are and I'll jump in as needed for the technical stuff.
Excellent. I'm going to recuse myself of this.
Okay.
And before he starts, I'm just going to duck out for the evening. So you guys have a good night.
Bye, David.
Hi, Dave.
Jeremy, can you um, can you post the site plan or the items I gave you?
I I can. Start talking and I'll pull it up as you go.
Sure. Hi, good evening. Wayne Zuckerman, Farms at Stony Hill Sterling Properties, uh, principal in Sterling Properties. Um, like I say, it's deja vu, but I've been here before, probably six or seven months ago, but I'll look, I'll give you a little bit of history again. Uh, we are developing the farms at Stony Hill Route Six, hundred and seventeen units on approximately twelve acres. Uh, right now, we have um, approximately four out of the six buildings CO'd. Uh, two buildings to TCO very shortly. Our leasing has been um, going very well. We have approximately twenty units that have been leased so far since we opened about forty-six weeks ago. As a matter of now, a little bit of history, besides a hundred and seventeen units, which sits on approximately eight and a half acres, the balance of about three and a half acres. You can see up on the board. Balance on the red circled area was approved for a medical office building of twenty thousand feet on two stories. That had, that deal, which was, came before us purchasing the property, came with a ninety-nine year lease. Um, the tenant for that building approximately, I'm probably saying during COVID, indicated to us that the medical business for him is not a reality here in Bethlehem. So the property's been laying dormant and I came in here again, six or seven months ago, uh, willing to do what um, down the street, across from the big Y, the other development, I forget the name, where they introduced for themselves according, according protocol to the zoning in place for Route Six, retail on the first floor, residential above. Um, I don't know how far they've gone there with, with their. Um, I don't know how far they've gone there with with their um their units. But somewhere along the line, I heard that uh even though the units were above, they wanted to propose and put their units back as a four-story unit, which we don't have in our in our hundred and seventeen units, but down the street, they've got four story in their zone. I don't know how the town gave them that, but that's that's neither here nor there. I'm just pleading now for the case that we have with our medical office site. So my proposal here is we and and our tenant uh is willing to go along with this, as I said before, six, seven months ago. We'd like to add more units. Feel that it's a uh it's an excellent site. We are proposing, according to your zoning of retail or slash commercial on the first floor with approximately uh forty units above that. That's something that we've laid out based on commercial zoning for parking as well as the apartments. Um. We'd also like to entertain uh in that proposal for commercial, which I'm not sure if the zoning allows for mini storage, but we would like to have mini storage as a use for that first floor, should we not find anything else of a retail or a commercial component. Uh, but anything as far as garages or anything leading to that would be facing away from Route Six and be facing the existing apartments. We also threw out another idea for ourselves uh in the fact that I believe residential is allowed on the first floor in that Route Six corridor if it's assisted living. We don't propose assisted living. But if uh should this board be reasonable to say, well, if if we provide a fifty-five, an active adult unit only along that corridor and be allowed to have residential on the first floor, that would also be something that the farms would be interested in. In both scenarios, I believe uh, although we'd like, although coming from New Jersey base, we always do twenty percent of affordable. But in this case, I think we'll be willing to stretch it to be thirty percent of affordable in either scenario. So that's really it. Otherwise, uh, the town won't get a rateable on that front piece. And it'll sit dormant.
So I'll jump in briefly uh based on based on your current regulations, this would ultimately be an application for text amendment to do a couple of things. Uh, your current regulations have a maximum density in the Route Six Zone of ten units per acre. This site is eleven point seven acres. Uh, it is approved with a hundred and seventeen units. It's maxed out currently. Um, it also does not allow presently, your regulations do not allow residential units within two hundred and seventy-five feet of the center line of the frontage road. So would those two buildings that are there on the uh on the site plan highlighted in yellow are certainly within that two hundred and seventy-five foot um distance. And so we would need to adjust the language to allow for that. And so in conversations with Wayne, what I've suggested is considering an application which allows residential units in that two hundred and seventy-five foot buffer, so long as the ground floor of the building uh reserved for commercial uses. Um, and proposing a density bonus in the Route Six Zone to allow for additional units beyond ten percent or ten units per acre in exchange for thirty percent of those units being affordable, so that that helps you get your housing unit equivalency points. Um, knowing, of course, that this is a would be a text, a text amendment application. We wanted to get in front of the board and take the temperature of where you would be on that. The storage component was something that came up a little bit later based on the, you know, current retail office market that's sort of out there. Um, and so the concept there would be to allow small scale self-storage units uh in a commercial building or within a mixed-use building, so long as they don't take up more than thirty-three percent of the floor area of the commercial building and that they don't face the street. So that's sort of the three pieces that would be considered uh for a text amendment application here.
Okay. So you're looking for like the temperature of the board, Jeremy?
That's that's what we're doing. Yeah.
All right. Kenny, most of them?
Yeah, um, are you saying that there's no appetite for any kind of retail on that first floor?
Um, I'm not saying that there isn't. But I'm saying my suggestion is if it's if it can't be just retail, we also would like to have the option of a self-storage.
Well, the project you referenced further up the street there, they kind of indicated they didn't have an issue with businesses on the first floor. They had no problem renting according to that.
I'm here making my my pitch.
Okay.
Well, what did you say about the making assisted living, proposal, the plan if it was going to be assisted living?
I don't have a plan of assisted living. I was told by previous planner at Bethel that assisted living would be permitted with with the exception of having residential on it. Unless unless I'm wrong, then Jeremy can
No, I'm I'm looking at that regulation right now and I can read it to you even. It's it's uh subsection J under four point three in your regulation. And it it uh it allows for assisted living uses uh no, no more than two and a half stories and thirty-five feet. Maximum building coverage is twenty-five percent. Um.
But just for again, as as a matter of fact, we I had reached out to two um kinder care type of uses, one that's existing in town as well. Uh, they they were concerned about Route Six, so they were out. Uh, I did reach out to uh Quick Check and Wawa. Uh, they were sort of interested, but I don't think that the town nor me at the farms want to have a quick check or any kind of a a use like that with gas as well on six. So although that's permitted.
Guys.
Yeah, they won't.
Yeah.
And then this originally, this was just all um
Medical.
Medical.
Mm-hmm.
And so that wasn't part of the residential count. Now, you change it, you're going to be, you're going to need to increase density of residential. Okay. Um, what you said, what percentage has already CEO a hundred and seventeen?
Probably in a month will be almost one sitting. Um, all the buildings are.
And and how many of those are affordable?
None.
None.
I'll jump in here usually as a charity. Save my comments for last. Uh. This is very uh reminisce of the the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay development uh or district, I'm sorry. Which is how the uh project industry you're representing, the four-story buildings. Uh, that was a mistake by this commission approving those. We uh removed that from the from the uh the regulations shortly after they were approved. Because the commission saw it and what it was proposed and what it came in as. Uh, and then after we've actually removed the four-story buildings from our Route Six Zone, this uh I personally, and I don't I don't want to speak for everyone, but as a commission, we agreed and voted to uh remove that four-story. So just to give you a little bit of background on that. I'm not a fan of any self-storage or any storage on the first six zone. Uh, I really think uh allowing the high-density uh housing up in there over the years has been a mistake in Bethel's part. Um, you know, you look at Brookfield, they have like the mere mile there with BJs and Costco. It's full of commercial. It's a great tax base for the town. Uh, Bethel had an opportunity for that, especially with like Target and a lot of the uh commercial endeavors coming up the street. They kind of fumbled it a little bit. Uh, my opinion is I don't think we should continue that. Uh. I would strongly suggest if the medical offices aren't going to be working, that find another strictly commercial application for those front two buildings. Uh. Again, and I say all this. So my my opinion would be no, I would not be in favor of that uh of what you're proposing. But I will back that up and say I do appreciate the thought and effort you put into this. And the proposal of willing to go to thirty is not affordable because there is no affordable on that project right now. That was done before. That was requirement. Uh, I don't even know how long ago that was approved. It was two years.
Or my. I'll be close to ten.
Yeah. So that's why there's a hundred and seventeen units there with no we have no housing points with that. It's not an eight thirty G. Getting no uh affordable units. Um. So that actually will drop our numbers uh for our percentage that we're going after. Uh. Again, so again, I'm just I'm just trying to play both sides of the fence here, but ultimately I would not be in favor.
Yeah, I think I'd be uh uh it makes me real convincing to give you that there's a need for more self-storage. Seems like we have quite a bit of new stuff and uh it just doesn't seem like it speaks. Uh, so that that's something that sticks out to me. I guess the rest of the mission said.
Well, you're saying, excuse me, are you saying no for self-storage? But
That that yeah, I mean, that that particular part it feels like it's right.
Um. I agree with everything that you have to say. Um, I think, I'm not sure if it was you, but someone came before us and wanted to know if we could they could have self-storage and we had said no, because we all agree to support. Um. And I don't think I would like to have more residential in that area. I think more options being in tax base. You have enough, I think, in that area.
I apologize. I I I do remember you being here and it was very late that night. So thank you for coming back.
Mm-hmm.
Having patience to do so. I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying medical law, an MOB is not really feasible.
That's correct.
Okay.
If if it were feasible, our tenant would be building the building.
Oh, okay. So medical office building and its special requirements. So often they go on terms of financial issues. Commercial. What is exactly your position on commercial? Not self-storage. Commercial.
I wouldn't have a position. It would just be you telling me we'll only allow commercial. That's up to the event to decide what's going to go in there. Is it going to be? Is it going to be a uh a hairdresser? Is it going to be a dry cleaner? Or is it going to be a uh, you know, a pot selling the whatever? Okay, uh, you know, a so that that's that's
We're dry town. There aren't a lot of stuff.
That's it's America. Anything can happen in there. Okay.
Personally, I would like to see that changed, but others.
Okay, yeah. All I'm saying is that the medical business is not going to happen then.
I got it.
That's all to say.
But then you don't have any objection to regular commercial.
I would have no choice, do I?
You would prefer a residential.
Correct.
You would have to settle for the code that says it's commercial.
That's correct. I'm I'm here looking for relief.
Right.
Okay. And the relief then would be it. What if we just made it a fifty-five and up only in the front porch? Which will give you thirty percent.
You'd be talking about eighty units.
I'm going to say
Forty on them.
Saying what works at twenty units per acre. I'm going to say plus or minus sixty. Something like it depends on the parking.
And and you're opposing to us that you're going twenty percent affordable thirty percent.
No, right now there is zero. Work on there.
Right. He was saying in New Jersey was
Yeah. The general way of doing business in New Jersey and multiple projects that we're on, twenty percent is the more. Sometimes a town has sufficient amount, then they'll say we have enough, just give us ten percent or give us nothing. We we're ready to satisfy the state law.
And and I apologize. This is for me to catch up with all this. None of these units would qualify under eight thirty G and they would not help the town of Bethel in terms of our other.
Well, any affordable unit would would go towards the ancient ones.
It would.
Yes.
So then why not have forty percent?
I mean, we we could, you could propose that if you like.
If if we have to, if we're already we already had a stretch of thirty percent.
Aren't we very close? Satisfying? No, no, I'm just, we're spitballing here. So again, if if he is a commissioner wants to suggest that uh you know, that that's that's the perfect.
Hey, guys, keep in mind though, just up the street there. You know, they've got commercial on the first floor and apartments on the second floor. And why would we want to drop down a standard? And eliminate them. I mean, why would you want two stories of residential after? That's all I'm saying.
Well, you made the change from not having a mixed use. What did that area become? I didn't think that was residential at all in that area on Route Six. We have been mixed use. And then and when you have have the four stories and all that, you hire ten three.
The layover? Are you talking about the schmood?
Yeah.
Well, what's the question?
But when that was removed.
Yeah, it just went reverted back to regular Route Six.
And Route Six what?
Yeah, the schmood was a layover zone, just the same as like TOD is.
Right. But what did that allow? That's
The schmood, it was very
No, no, I know that. But but what was there before that I observed that?
Just whatever the Route Six zoning is that after that.
But I didn't think that was residential. I thought it was all commercial without one. Maybe I'm wrong.
Route Route Six Zone allows residential as long as it's more than two hundred and seventy-five feet from the center line of the frontage road.
That subsection.
This is what's up.
Yeah, that's the one up top.
I don't know. Bob, do you have anything to add or two stories?
I I I I'm against to be a self-story. Uh, I I also don't like idea of it's all residential. But I I could stick with a commercial along Stony Hill Road there. And therefore I would be in favor of of putting retail with it's some housing above it if that that's what they have to do. But would that by going to the eight thirty G affordable housing, would it include all the hundred and seventeen units or would it include just the new units in these buildings?
Anything over the hundred and seventeen?
Yeah, it would just be the new units. The one seventeen is is on their own. What's what's built and approved? That's, we're just talking about the little three, three and a half acre rough partial that's on the front.
Uh, and and actually, that that's that is somewhat fair because when we went to the four stories uh 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 Copper Square over there. It's when we we got the uh affordable units in there. And that's when we put it in, you have to have affordable units in residential on Stony Hill.
Does that make this an eight thirty G project? And they're just saying they're affordable?
No. I think they're either sometimes you say, you say affordable, I could, you suppose would have worked for us housing. Or if you'd like to spin it, but I I'm going to say with the reference to Jeremy and the planners, it's just we're mimicking.
Yeah.
You're just providing affordable units that can count for each of these.
Correct.
Not an eight thirty G.
Basically throwing a bone to the town.
Yes.
No, I understand. Giving us, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, would be a text amendment. You know, the entire Route Six Zone would be subject to it. And the the idea is that in exchange for additional unit allowing additional units, the developer would get uh, you know, in in exchange for you allowing additional units, you get more affordable units. And that's that's kind of the concept there.
It's so it's not just for this.
And that's issue I'd
Make a change. For this, it's even higher rules on the whole Route Six. Oh, jeez.
Right, because this is the Route Six Zone. So you know, you can't do contract zoning. You can't just apply it to this one parcel because you don't have an overlay. So it would be to the entire Route Six Zone.
That's the other reason. That opens up doors, Bob.
So you've, so this, my request would be a spot zone. That's what you're saying.
No, what your request, what you would like would be a spot zone, but for us to do, it would have to be a blanket across the entire zone. Which then anybody could come in and Which then anybody could come in and ask for the same thing and it would be within the zoning rules.
Yeah, it's a text amendment.
So modify these higher zone. Uh, you want to take a consensus?
Yep. I was that question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the assisted living, because I do think there is a need for assisted living. So, so you would propose to put assisted living?
No, it's not okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, are you kidding?
No.
Not too, no. No.
No.
Bob? Bob, who's, would you be in favor or not of this?
I would be, I would always be in favor of it if it led to the, it stuck with what we, we got up at the other end.
Okay, so you'd be, you'd be in favor of this proposal?
Re- retail and, and uh housing above.
Okay, and I would be against it.
So the majority is now?
Yeah.
Although you have it down the street, but that, that was ways.
That was.
Get taken away.
It was, like, like I said, it was, it was that was approved, the uh, the, the, that's layover zone was uh designed by the lawyer that was representing that project. Uh, it was sold as it was going to be a great thing. Uh, we accepted it as change. I came in with the project and I remember sitting here, at that time I wasn't in the chair, I was sitting in the corner there like, this is not what I had envisioned when we were sold the, the schmood. So we approved it because it was, you know, to the letter of the, of what was on the books. Uh, we didn't have really think any reason not to fit this home, to fit these layover. Uh, and then afterwards, we as a commission then removed that layover zone because we didn't want to see it happen again. And that's just the little history level on.
Did that, did that project increase density or is it still at ten, ten years?
Oh, no, it's massive increases of density.
So if.
I couldn't even tell you, it might.
So that was all. That was all.
Yes, the entire schmood is.
Now, what happens if I go officially, you go to an eight thirty zone?
Yeah, that's up to you. Yeah.
So that, that's possible.
Sure, because I'm not going to recommend you yes or no unless that's clear to you.
I, I don't, you, you'd need to, you'd need to talk to an attorney about that because I, I'm not sure, you know, the fact that your hundred and seventeen units relies on that parcel out front to get to the, to get to that count, I think impacts your ability to do uh anything eight thirty G there. So I, I don't know the answer specifically, but you know, you're using the entire eleven point seven to get to the hundred and seventeen, so I'm not sure that you can I, I don't know that it qualifies for, for an eight thirty G is what I'm saying, you'd have to, you'd have to talk.
I'm not an attorney, I'm not gonna give you that advice.
So, uh, we're down to radical office building or any other commercial use there, is that correct?
You can use it, yeah, I think, I think as a board, I'm not speaking for everybody, but yeah, we'd be in favor of any, any commercial use other than self storage.
And if it stays vacant, that's okay too.
I'd say I would, I would don't want to see it stay vacant.
Well, it's gonna stay vacant. I'm, I'm here to appeal to having a ratable there versus a, an open field of nothing.
Yeah, but your text amendment is going to change the entire street, the entire length of Route Six, it's not just your property.
Well, may, maybe the board looks at the entire strip and say, what's, what are the possibilities? Maybe your affordable component could be used another, another parcel along Route Six. That's the consideration here.
Yeah.
Sure, if you did this tonight, you'd be sued by someone saying, hey, I've got a piece of property, give me your same zoning. Maybe that's a benefit to the town, same way, put your retail on the first floor, sure, give us retail, give us affordable above, give us thirty percent for your housing needs. I think that's a good thing, what's, what's wrong with that?
Again, we, we had that and we saw what it brought to the town and we decided against it, so we removed it. Then I think most townspeople would agree it was a good decision.
End up the road, even though you're not, you're, you're recommending what they had proved up the road and then they came back to us and asked if they could have one floor commercial and then add a fourth floor on that one building that's when it was through the three floors, so that's the difference there.
If we were here getting the approval in four story versus three, we'd have more units, we wouldn't be having to discuss it. Maybe being, hadn't been able to give you the affordable component then. But here we are, yeah.
And then the other thing is, we already approved the gas station with a drive, probably not a drive-through, but a, like a seven eleven type store.
Right.
That's on the corner of Benedict Road and Route Six. That's, that's coming, just so you know, that that's already another gas station, because you were talking about gas stations.
You know, again, I've got to look at all possibilities, right?
Well, I appreciate your viewpoint, I, I do. Um, I just, I don't think for us as a board, it's, it's a reasonable uh proposal.
Thank you, Trey.
You're welcome, you have a good night. All right, uh, we will move on to number eight, new business, eight A, we have P C Z dash twenty-five dash twenty-four. Clark Studio Incorporated, twenty-one Trowbridge, Jeremy?
Hi, yeah, this is a site plan and special permit for an industrial site down there in the industrial zone just next to the project. Get your last meeting in nineteen, uh, this does require a special permit, so tonight we're just looking for an acceptance and a scheduling of a hearing.
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Uh, what day?
To schedule the public hearing?
Yeah.
We got on the day.
Yeah.
Go past that? Yeah, could we, could we push that out for the second meeting in, in September?
Uh, yeah, that's sixty-five days, yeah, second meeting in September works.
Yeah.
That is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
So I'd make a motion to set the, that's a public hearing?
Yes, public hearing, yeah.
Make more than set a public hearing for Clark Studio Incorporated, twenty-one Trowbridge Site Plan Special Permit, it's a motion to fill uh, September twenty-third here in meeting, the second clock.
Second.
Second.
The motion was already on.
That was just motion to accept. I just made a motion to accept.
Oh, usually it's not.
Nope. All right, uh, public input, anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Opinions? Okay, that's, oh, sorry about that. Uh, public input, anyone? No? Anyone online? Anything to add?
I'm not seeing anyone.
All right, uh, planners report, Jeremy, what do you got?
I've got my written report there for you, I know you're all uh anxious about the eight thirty G moratorium. All I can tell you at this point is we're working on it, we've reworked the numbers, there were some calculations that were not quite correct. Uh, we're still working to find uh the last few documents that we need to put the application together and have a complete package. I've been in contact uh with the town attorney, there was a suggestion that we reach out to Chuck on this one, I did that, I did that. Chuck responded, he really has not been familiar with these obligations, has been no recent experience with it, so we're going to keep working with Melanie on this. Um, and I'll actually be in the office with a goal of finding the last few documents next week. So hopefully in the next week or two, we are at least to a point where we have a complete package for review to, for, for submit.
Uh, Jeremy, how many, uh, by your calculations, how many H U E points do we need and how many do you think we have about?
Let me pull that up, give me one moment. So you need a hundred and fifty-nine point six because it's based on the twenty twenty census, so you need two percent of your twenty twenty census number, which is uh, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty units, so you need a hundred and fifty-nine point six H U E points. My calculations are coming up with two thirty-nine point five. The caveat to that is, um, there's, I need to do a little bit of research and compiling of documents on a couple of recent properties to make sure that the numbers are accurate. And then there's twenty and a half points that are coming from accessory apartments and I need to verify that those are deed restricted. They're in the application package that was put together a few months back, but I need to verify that we have deed restrictions for all forty-one of those units, otherwise they do not count. So that's, that's what I mean by next week, I'm going to be focusing on some of those last minute details, but the numbers that I've come up with, it looks like you're okay.
So long story short, we should be able to apply within
I believe, I believe so, yeah, as soon as we get the last bit of documentation, there's, there's some deeds that we need to find, we have to make sure that everything has deed restrictions. Um, and there are some site plans that we need to get our hands on from some of the older projects as well.
Do you need all forty-one, all forty-one, or if you get the majority of them, you're good?
Yeah, if we get the majority of them, we'll be okay, I don't think we need all forty-one.
Okay.
How, how does that timeline work for when the, when that submission goes through, we apply for the moratorium versus when we stop taking application, eight thirty G applications, what does that look like?
You cannot turn away an eight thirty G application until your moratorium is approved by the state. And it's, your guess is as good as mine as to how long that's going to take, you know, I, I've heard up five, six months is, is what I'm hearing. Um, but, but, you know, I, I, I really have no idea.
And any application that we accept in the meantime, we have to consider until the moratorium was being fact correct?
Yeah, you would have to accept it, correct.
Jay, what were your numbers, eighteen hundred and fifty-nine is what we needed?
Yeah, a hundred and fifty-nine point six is what you need and it looks like you have two thirty-nine point five.
Then you said you were fighting over, not fighting, you were trying to get some more information on forty-one of them?
I, I need to verify that the accessory apartments are deed restricted because if they're not, they don't count. Um, and there are a couple of new, new projects that we just got discussed, and I just need to be by, the numbers I have accounted are accurate.
Okay. And if they are, if the ones that you're looking at would be deed restricted or not deed restricted, does that put us under one fifty-nine?
Uh, no, the accessory apartments are only, um, those are only worth a half a point each, so those forty-one units are only worth twenty point five points.
So is it worth even going through those if we're already?
No, probably not, as long as I can verify that the newer projects that just came online are, are what I think they are.
So. Yeah, because that's a big spread.
Yes, it is.
Do you have to put the number of years, that is, forty years makeup and then you want me to put the out of that again on each of those things by the years of when they were built?
Yeah, so the number of points is dictated somewhat by when these were approved, because prior to two thousand, the requirement was, I think, twenty-five percent set aside, not thirty. So some of these things are worth more than others, so those application dates do matter. Um, but all of them are within forty years and all of them are still active approvals, or rather, they're still active deed restrictions. So that piece of it, you're safe.
Thanks, thanks, and that's, that's good news.
Uh, Jeremy, do you have anything else for us?
Um, no, that's about all I've got right now.
All right, uh, moving to commission comments, um, I have a question, uh, I wanted to ask you, Jeremy. The public hearing for T O D is supposed to be scheduled on August twelfth, we're now looking at having the applet of the proposal or the hearing, I'm sorry, for uh Vessel has been continued to August twelfth. I think I speak for everyone, I say, we don't want to be here for six hours like we were last two weeks ago. So it pains me to ask this, but can we push the T O D talk? I know that's, that does not have to do with regular timelines because it's, it's board initiated.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, you don't, you don't have to follow the timelines at eight seventy, if you want to push that off, you can. There's a couple of different ways you could do it, you could um leave it on the agenda and, you know, have the official start date on the agenda be the twelfth, and then when we get to the meeting on the twelfth, simply say that we're going to continue this, or you can, or you can reschedule it and, and we'll, um, we'll do what we need to do on our end.
Now, if we were to reschedule it, would that require uh another public noticing, which needs to go out thirty days ahead of time, I know that was an issue?
Yeah, we, we would, we would notify the cog and uh Danbury that, that the, the scheduled date has been changed, but the notification has gone out to them, the intermunicipal referrals have gone out. And the way that works is it has to go out at least thirty days before the scheduled hearing, so we're fine with, with that piece of it. Um, legal notice in the newspaper will probably rerun that.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to ask the board for a consensus, what's your guys feeling? Uh, and again, it pains me to ask this because I've wanted to put this on the agenda for a while, but uh.
What about setting aside a special meeting just for that in September?
I'm, I'm open to that, what's the rest of the board feel?
Just for Q O D, you're saying?
Yeah. Because I have a separate Q O D special meeting in September, I think you did that. We did, we've done that a while ago. Let me look for a calendar.
Yeah, I was just about to pull that up.
Just a thought.
No, that's a good idea, because I, I think, again, I'm, if I'm speaking for everybody, just tell me to shut up. Um, we don't have a, we don't have a second meeting in August, that's our scheduled break as a board and I, I think, uh, I don't want to not have that break, so. Is everyone agreement with that?
Seventy-seven.
Yeah.
I want to move it, move it to September.
Well, regular, a regular meetings on the ninth.
Oh, sixteen.
Yeah, we have regular meetings on the ninth and the twenty-third, we could do maybe something on the sixteenth, keep it on Tuesday nights, is that available?
Yeah, I think sixteenth would work for us. Because you're, you're talking to.
Sixteenth of September.
Yeah.
So we're really only moving the, the Q O D one week. No.
One month.
Oh, I'm sorry, one month.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, but then you guys will have a back-to-back every week, you guys can have that.
Oh, wait, yeah, if we did it on the second.
May or maybe.
We would also have that kind of, we don't have a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we did, yeah, September second, yeah, I think.
February is Monday.
Yeah, it's the day after.
Oh.
I'm good either way. I suggest let's do it on the sixteenth, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna make.
I think that's just kind of a clever question, so I, I, I really do appreciate the consideration. How do we make these meetings, I was saying selfishly, of course, that's, that would be great, but also for public. Um, anticipating how long an applicant, you know, uh, one of these public hearings is going to be for any application. Don't, don't we have some control about how long they run and how much information is shared and all that stuff, like, can we set some constraints?
Well, we, Paul did a great job last night, I know you were on vacation, yeah, when we did the vessel application, yeah, we had a signup sheet, she came up one by one, yeah. They were, each person was allowed to speak once. Okay. And they had a three-minute time limit, it was loose, they held to it most of the part, but it did, it did help a lot, it ran a lot. And I think moving forward.
And he started early, so.
Yeah, you're, you're just anticipating our public input. It's, yes, I'm anticipating public input for both these hearings, um, to be. But, but I agree, a little bit of, and then if we're talking commission comments, right, even, even in the future, you know, I've been, other boards presenting on the other side of the table where the applicant speaks, the board, they can reply, the, the public can then comment, and then the applicant has the last say. And that's it, so you're not going back to four, five hundred times, yeah. They, I, in, in my opinion, the public should, needs to be as prepared as the applicant to speak against or for a project. So simply just let, it's not fair to the board, in my opinion, to just let people just sit there and come up with questions, ask questions and just keep coming up, it just drags them. So having a little bit of structure that way, I think, is my, in my opinion, something we need to think of.
In any different, then we'll be.
Not the other day, but in the past, it's been back and forth.
Right.
I don't think, uh, anyone came up twice last meeting, uh, and that's the goal, because there, there has been a lot of back and forth in all comments from public should be directed to the board. Uh, there should never be a back and forth or an argument, which we've all seen happen, between the applicant or their representative and the public. Uh, and then, to the same token, there shouldn't be an argument between the commission and the, and the public or the commission and the, and the applicant. It's, 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 they're stating their case, you're going to state, a commissioner state our case and we, we decide on that. Uh, you know, we can have some back and forth between the commission and the applicant, but there should be no back and forth to the public. Um, and I will make, and it sounds really neat, but it just is what it is, it's public comment, it's not public questions. So unfortunately, they can come in and ask all the questions they want, they're not entitled to answers, the public is not entitled to answers. Me personally, I try to make sure the public gets answers, I want answers, everything, everything. I want answers, everything, everything should be answered, but there's gonna be some of these questions that come out of left field that. Just, we don't have the ability to answer, or legally, especially with eight thirty G, we don't, we. Don't get the answers ourselves, which I know is a pain in the butt. For everyone involved, but it's just, it it is some of the nature of peace. So yes, to answer your question around this back, yes, I I I looked into this, I talked to Jeremy. A bunch, uh, I actually watched some videos, how surrounding towns do it. Uh, with theirs, and that's how I came up with the, let's have a sign-up, and I think I sent everyone an email a couple of weeks ago. Uh, because that sign-up idea is not something new that's literally out in the hallway on the P M Z doorway. Or on their bulletin board, so it's just something. We got away from it. Uh, I intend to keep it up going forward. I think it. Great, I was able to call everyone, everyone was able to be heard. Um. And I I intend to, when. Public hearings get. Uh, continued. To just make an announcement, getting to ask people that have already spoke. If you have anything new to add, to come on up, and if you're gonna come up and reiterate the same things. Uh, I appreciate the support, I appreciate the concern. Um, but again. We're all volunteers, no one wants to sit for six hours, and by the end of it, you kind of start nodding off or anything, so.
You're not making good decisions, but.
It's exactly, you're making a decision just because you want to go home at that point. So, again, that's that's something I'm gonna ask. And it's public comment, I'm not gonna stop. Someone comes up here and repeats themselves, I'm not gonna hammer, gavel, and say. Hey, I can't do that. I I'm gonna ask politely. That if you have anything new to add, to to come on up. Uh. So that's just how I plan on moving.
Well, also, it could be a a an indication that that they can actually. File something in writing. If it's gonna be longer than the two and a half, three minutes.
Exactly, exactly. And we've always accepted letters, or, I mean, everyone's read the letters that are in the drives and know that they're there, so. Will you have something?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I I understand this public comment. But we have gotten ourselves as a commission. Past three months minimum. To a situation where. Comments are made in the form of a question. I'll give you an example. Are you planning to have a rock crusher on site? And we all know that the applicant. Takes notes and attempts to answer. What is considered to be a question. Comment or response first. But we have no way of, we go through one meeting to the next, where we said, well, we asked for this last time and we didn't get it. And we still don't have the answer on the second meeting, and then we go to the third meeting. And there's still not an answer. How many trucks are we talking about? I mean. The penny. Four meetings, we get the answer to one applicant, to how many trucks were gonna be in and out of that site.
I don't know if the commission has any tools to force questions from an applicant.
Need answers.
For answers sometime.
I think that the questions are related to safety, we don't get the answers, and the public hearing closes, right?
Oh, the public hearing has to close anyways, but.
But then we should hire our own expert to answer our question if they're not gonna answer our question.
We can do that during the public hearing, yeah.
But we have no way of knowing how many trucks are gonna be in and out of the specific.
We would need to rely on our experts. Yeah.
Our experts.
S L R. And if it's a safety-related question, they don't answer, I imagine, factor in the how we. How we move forward as a, as a, right, so.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you guys, it's just. Um, I I. This is something I did in my. Just a few years I've done. What we can do. Forster.
Turn it down.
Um, alright, real quick, before we forget, I'm gonna make a motion to move the public hearing for TOD. Uh, to September sixteenth.
Second.
In. At seven P M in the G P room. I second that, all. All in favor?
Hi.
The opposed? Extentions? Alright, I'll see everyone there on the sixteenth.
And you'll have it on over.
Oh, yeah, all of our meetings are hybrid.
Because sometimes they suck.
Alright, any other questions or comments for you?
I can hear about the eight thirty G numbers that we have.
Yeah.
You know, need, like the lack of teeth that this town needs.
I've been pushing, uh, Jeremy, I think I've worn his cell phone out last week as well as Dan's. Uh, just trying to make sure this thing is getting pushed along as fast as it can. Um. Okay, I, one other thing before I go, Jeremy. Did any, that gentleman that was here had all those questions for, um. What is that, Eagle Rock up there? The summit, the summit, is that, is that it? Did he anywhere, get anywhere with that? Any answers for them?
Yeah, we've, we've, uh, we've gotten a couple of the documents for him, and the other ones, I think the things that he's specifically calling for. Simply don't exist, and so, you know, we we've passed along what we can, and. It is what it is.
Okay. Alright. That was my, I just had, uh, no pass that, so. With that, make the closing meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Night, everyone.